It is 6:31, so I'm gonna go on and call us to order. If they'll simmer down down there at the end of the table. I'm going to call us to order. And I will ask Commissioner Altuzar to open us up with prayer, if you would, please.
Please pray with me. Dear Lord, thank you so very much for this beautiful day. Thank you for all you've blessed us with. And Lord, please give us direction tonight and help us to do what's right for this city and vote the conscience of the people that we represent. Lord, thank you for everything. Watch over us and protect us as we go our own way and bless our nation. All this we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. With that, Zach, will you call the roll, please?
Altuzar?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Hardwick?
Here.
Hasty?
Here.
Longmire? Martin?
Here.
Silkwood?
Here.
Slattery?
Here.
Coker?
Here.
That is eight, I believe, that is here. And Director Free had mentioned to me that Commissioner Longmire is a little under the weather and wasn't gonna be here this evening on that. So next up on the agenda is public comments relative to agenda items only. I did not see anybody had signed up for public comments. Is that correct, Director Free?
That's correct.
Okay, that's correct. So I will declare that here or declare that closed. Moved on to item four, which is the acceptance of the agenda. Assume everybody's got an opportunity to kind of look over things, and so I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Move to accept the agenda.
Second.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Altuzar and a second from Commissioner Slattery. We'll go into a voice vote on that. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion carries. Next up is approval of the minutes from our last meeting on December 3rd. And again, same thing, I think everybody's got an opportunity to review those, but if there's any questions or comments, I'll look for light to be lit up, and there is none, so I will entertain a motion to approve our minutes from December 3rd.
Got a motion from Commissioner Silkwood.
And can I get a second on that, please?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Slattery. And all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposition? Hearing none, that motion carries. Next up on the agenda is our consent agenda. I believe we've got, looks like, three items on there, and these were all handled by staff from Timothy Whitten on that. So if you would, just briefly before we entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, first off, is there anything that any commissioner wants to pull off consent agenda on that? This would be the time to do that. Not hearing any. Timothy, I'll let you just kind of briefly go over what we've got on this consent agenda, if we would, please.
Okay. First, we have McCarroll Retail Site Plan. This is at the corner of Forest Retreat and West Main Street. It's where the old McClouds Pass Control and Anybody Bake Shop used to be there. Those two little buildings have been torn down. In their place are proposed a single 6,000-square-foot multi-tenant commercial building. Twenty-two parking spaces have been provided, access to the sites off of Forest Retreat. And then the next item, TriStar Hendersonville Medical Center. This is a temporary prefab building that is... So the hospital's currently undergoing significant renovations and additions to their kitchen facilities. In the meantime, they need this temporary facility, which would be located in front of the hospital, to house the temporary kitchen facilities. Again, it's just a prefab unit. They expect this to be in place for up to a year. And then finally, we've got Moon Valley Nurseries. Of course, the final, the CDP was approved for this a while back. This is in compliance with that approved CDP. And all of the conditions of approval that were made by the Planning Commission and BOMA are listed on the cover sheets. All those have been taken care of. They're doing the improvements to Saundersville Road that were agreed to. They've agreed to all staff comments.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from commissioners before we go into vote on this? Commissioner Slattery?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just an observation and a question to the group as a whole. On the Moon Valley Nursery Site Plan, I just find it interesting that, unless I missed it, we don't have their landscape plan. Is that correct? We don't have their final landscape plan for the property?
We... Yes, we do have that.
Good, I was nervous that a landscape company couldn't...
I can find that and pass that down to you.
Thank you.
Do you have a landscape plan? Do you have a complete buffering plan?
So the plan shows existing buffering, existing trees to remain. There's a note on the plan that explains that at the time that they apply for their use and occupancy permit, we will go back and kind of look at the buffer that's remaining, look at how opaque or non-opaque it is, and to the degree that it's not sufficiently opaque, they will have to add evergreen landscape material to supplement that. It's a little bit difficult at this point in time to really figure out, you know, where that additional plant material needs to go, but they have committed to providing that at the time of the UNO application, or by the time of the UNO application.
That's to be as determined by the planning staff, and they agree to that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I might weigh in on that. As Timothy said, what we're doing here with this is a little different than what we typically do, but given the concerns through the process about the buffer with the neighboring properties, we wanted to make sure that it was an ample buffer, that it wasn't just what we approved, but it's the idea of what we approved. And then, you know, we'll hold up them occupying the property until that's fully resolved. So I think this is the best route to go, to make sure we get a proper buffer there.
So just one more question on that. So the property coming to the buffer, nothing is paved. That's all gravel there, so that we don't wind up with, whoops, we don't have enough room to really buffer it the way we would like to buffer it? That's correct? This is all gravel?
That's gravel. The buffer itself will not be gravelled. That would be the 20 feet of just...
Planted.
Plant, plants and mulch.
But there would be room if we found that the buffer was not what it needed to be?
Well, there will be room within the required 20 feet.
Okay. Seems a bit open. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from commissioners? Commissioner Evans?
I'll just ask this question again. I'm still concerned about the turnoff into the unloading area off of Saundersville Road. Does anybody else have any concern about that? They're gonna be going in there with semis, and there's a gate there? So is there enough room to pull off the shoulder of Saundersville Road until somebody opens the gate, or is that not perceived as a problem?
I don't know if Stephen can speak to that, or CJ?
Can I do it now?
No. No. CJ, if you would, just state your name.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Commissioner. My name is CJ Merle with 615 Design Group, 1517 Hungklaw Boulevard, Galveston, Tennessee. To answer your question, the widening, the minor widening and restriping of Saundersville Road that is shown on the screen right now is providing a dedicated center turn lane from the on-and-off ramp of 386 all the way up to Windcrest Way. And then we're also, with that, we're also providing a dedicated left turn lane for folks going south on Saundersville Road to turn onto Avondale Drive as well.
So there would be ample area for that semi to get out of the main lanes of traffic?
Yes, sir.
Until the gate could be opened and they can come in? Okay, that's all.
And we're actively working with TDOT to go through their right-of-way permit process, which is required because that turn lane, that center turn lane does go far enough south that it does get into the right-of-way. We're actively working with them, working with the city. The city has, the city engineers already, quote-unquote, I guess, gave a head nod of approval for the widening and the restriping of the road. We just have to go through the formal process with TDOT.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions, comments from commissioners? Seeing none, I just have one, just very quickly, not on this, but on the temporary kitchen at HCA. You mentioned that they were gonna be needing it for about a year. Is that something that they're locked into that year, or do they have that two years at the use and occupancy grant? So if they run into weather delays or anything like that, they don't need to come back and ask for additional approval?
We do, per the ordinance, we have leeway. We've actually can issue a temporary for up to two years.
So that's what they'll be getting is up to two years?
Well, we're expecting one year. That's what they've committed to. If push came to shove and they needed some additional time, we could grant that.
Okay, okay. But they're just asking for one at this...
That's, we asked them to make a commitment as to how long it would be there.
Okay, good deal. Well, thank you very much. That's what I wanted to clear up. Any other questions, comments from commissioners? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion to approve the consent as agenda as presented with all staff comments. We have a commotion from Commissioner Silkwood and a second from Commissioner Martin. We'll go into a roll call vote on that now.
Motion to approve has passed with eight yeses and zero noes.
Thank you very much. Thank you all. CJ, thank you for feedback on everything. Next, we'll go into item seven on the agenda, staff-level projects that have been approved and all, and as well as staff-level projects that are pending item eight, and I'll turn it over to Director Free and let him.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. The first item on staff-level projects that have been approved, Stonecrest Phase Five FDP Amendment for the final plat. And then also on projects that are pending, the Broken Paddle Outfitters Building Site Plan. I think we had some questions about that the last couple of meetings. Actually, they resubmitted here at the very end of the year, so I think that that's maybe getting near to getting approval on that. Also, front porch and Whataburger Parking Lot Edition. This is right there behind Myers' Front Porch. You know where the dumpster is back there and that access right there to the road? They're actually closing that off, and they're gonna create, I believe, seven parking spaces right there on the, not for the Whataburger, on the Whataburger property, but it's actually on the Myers' Front Porch property. So that'll be a nice improvement there. And that'll also include landscaping as well, so it should significantly improve it visually. Then we have the Hendersonville Football Stadium, this significant project at Hendersonville High School that creates the new football stadium, so it's pretty significant improvement there. We have Hidden Lake Phase Two and Five, lots two and three re-subdivision at 102 Hidden Way Court. This is just a, it's just a plat where they're dissolving a lot line so that they could do a fence on the property. Because we have something with, especially with residential, if you were gonna do something, fence a residential lot that didn't have anything on it, then everything on there would have to meet the requirements of a front yard fence. So you couldn't just put a six-foot or seven-foot privacy fence on a vacant lot, which makes sense, but they're having to dissolve this. They own both lots, and they're dissolving the lot line in order to do this. Indian Lake Forest Section 130 and 31 re-sub. I think this is just moving a lot line between two lots. We have the Noakes Edition at 108 Noakes Drive. This is, this is kind of interesting. This has been going on for a little while, but this is something, a while back, a couple of years ago, was actually, I think, created the lots, created two lots, and then, I mean, about a year or so ago, then they dissolved the lot line and created as one lot. Now they're coming back and re-establishing as two lots. So I believe that, I think it's commercial maybe there, or it might be dockside neighborhood, that I'm not sure exactly what they're planning on doing with that. Then we have, the next one is the Patsy Curtis Property at 300 Walton Ferry Road. This is a cornered lot where they have a house, and they're gonna be, and I think there's a little garage on it, too. They're gonna be tearing down the house and actually recreating four lots. So there'll be four homes, where there's one, and this is in the SR3, the newly-created SR3 zone that replaced some of those other zoning that was there. The TriStar Medical Hendersonville Hospital Medical Center Parking Lot, this is on the backside back there where the medical offices are in the corner, and they're adding a significant amount of new parking back there, kind of in a curved area. Pretty nice, pretty nice parking area, should be a significant investment. Then we have Verizon Small Cell at Indian Lake Boulevard, and then we have that Walmart remodel, that site plan that's been going on for a little while. And then we have Wells Fargo ATM. This is over here in front of the Kroger, right here near City Hall, near Burger, over there near Burger King. And we're working with them. I don't think we've heard back from them, Timothy, but we didn't like the placement of where they were placing that, so we requested them to consider that. But that's everything, Mr. Chairman. I'd be happy to answer any questions related to any of those, but that's all the activity that the staff has going on.
Any questions, comments from commissioners? I've got just one myself here, going back to that Myers' Front Porch and Whataburger Parking Edition. You said that they were closing stuff off. They're not closing off that access there from, that you would go in, pass there to go to Kroger, or where Kroger used to be, where Jump Place is now, or you'd still be able to take that drive in there?
I think that access, I think that is closing it off, isn't it, Timothy? You know what I'm talking about? Where the garbage, where the dumpster pad?
Yeah, where the dumpster pad used to be, where you could access the dumpster from that back road. That'll be closed off. They'll use part of that old concrete pad as the basis for little additional parking lot.
Okay.
That will be closed off.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you all. Next up on the agenda is officer elections, and I'll entertain a motion, if there is one on that.
I'll make a motion. We've had a good year. Everybody's, everything's gone real smooth. I think we ought to just keep the slate of officers exactly like they are right now. That will be Jeff as the chairman, Tim as the vice chairman, Vanessa as the secretary, and I'm willing to serve as the vice secretary since she's here all the time and there's nothing to be done. And that would, that would conclude the four officers that we need to elect.
Thank you, Commissioner Hasty. We appreciate your service there and your folks willing to step up. Oh, good. I think I heard a second from down here. I didn't catch who made it, though. Commissioner Evans, okay. We have a motion and a second, and we'll go into a roll call vote on this one as well. Or we can do a voice vote if that's easier. Let's do a voice vote. We'll go into a voice vote on that one. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, that motion carries. And next up is just item 10 is planning director comments, so I'll turn it back over to Director Free.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Chairman. I've just got kind of a couple of items. One thing that we do every January, we kind of give a year-end report or kind of an update of activity from the previous year. As you can see on your screen, these are some of the, and then everybody has also the sheet that was at the end of your pile here as well. But you can see all the items that we've taken care of this year, the preliminary plats two, final plats 23, preliminary development plans and final development plans, there were two of those. Combined development plans were the new process that we have that you can combine them. There were three of those. Four site plans. There were no actual straight rezonings. And we had with our, we issued sign permits, and of permanent signs, we issued 72 new permanent signs last year. Also, on minor home occupations, this is where somebody's operating a business out of their house. Typically, on a minor home occupation, that doesn't involve traffic coming and going to the house, but actually, there's pretty significant business that people are doing out of their, out of their homes. And actually, we had 273 new ones this year, which brings a total up to the active number of minor home occupation permits, up to 572. So that's a lot. And when we map them out, they're pretty evenly distributed throughout the community, so that's something that, it does a lot of different things. You know, it kind of spreads out some things where it reduces some traffic flows from people traveling out of town or even in town for different job things on a lot of these, so there's a lot of positive things with that. And everybody that gets a home occupation permit, they also must get a business license, so they also have a business license. Yes?
I just wanted to ask for some clarity on this. I see our packet here says that there were four site plans, but the screen says 48, and I think it felt more like 48 during the...
Yes, okay. Yeah, this one's wrong that I'm reading off of, so let's go with the 48. So there are, there's 48 site plans. Thank you so much for...
We averaged for a month. That's what it was.
And then we have on our use and occupancy permits, and then these are basically, whenever we have new buildings, they've got to get a use and occupancy for our commercial buildings and things like that. Sometimes if somebody's changing ownership, so this is a pretty good indication of the commercial and industrial activity of what's going on, so that's a pretty substantial number. I would mention the different touchpoints of the things that we do that come before you all and the things that are more zoning-related. Those things, as we look at them compared to last year, it's about a nine, almost a 10% decrease from the totals from 2023. And so even though that's a decrease, last year was a pretty significantly high year. It was one of our, one of our record-high years. So even though it's a little bit less, it's still at a very high, high level. One thing to note is, even if that number continues to go down a little bit or it kind of plateaus at that, there's a lot of activity going on, and as we're nearing this last 9% of undeveloped property that's in our community, that, you know, people are putting forth plans, and a lot of times, these are some of the most challenging sites, and that's one of the reasons it's in the last 9% of property to be developed. So what we have found as a staff and planning staff, fire, and also public works, and our city engineer's office, you know, what we're finding is, these submissions are more challenging. They're more challenging to review because they're kind of, in most instances, a little bit more difficult to develop for drainage, topography, access, and different things like that. So, you know, that's kind of what we're, what we're dealing with on that. Also, on the enforcement side of things, our enforcement numbers are still very strong. It always surprises me how many enforcement things we do. But with our zoning enforcement officer in 2024, we sent out 962 violation letters. That's where, hey, you can't do this, or you need to stop or fix it, or we're gonna have to cite you. And then 113 of those, we actually had to take them to court, and we cited, cited 113. So that's kind of surprising. A lot of communities don't necessarily have that, but this is pretty consistent for us. One of the things, you know, having great, great vision and great plans for our community that predate even all of us up here, we've just had very consistent, high expectations that our community leaders and our citizens have had for our community through the years. But part of that is a good, strong, solid enforcement of what the rules are, and this community's done an excellent job of maintaining that in a fair and firm, but consistent, consistent way. So those are very, and it's very, very helpful to do that. A lot of times, it's very difficult to do because when you're, when you're enforcing those different things, but the planning staff, they do a great job with all of those, all of those different things. And that's everything, that's kind of an overview of kind of a year-end progress. Have a couple other things to share, but are there any questions about the actions and activities of what, of what we've kind of wrapped up here in 2024? Okay.
Commissioner Slattery?
Thank you. Just a question, I'm not sure how to quantify this, but I'm curious, since this is now, we're at the 13-month mark from the tornado that ripped down West Main. I'm curious if there are any metrics or a sense of what percentage of the damage has been addressed, or can you give us any feel for that?
I can. Yeah, that's a very, that's a very good question. Actually, this is something, really, for almost a year, we've been meeting on since then, probably about once a month. We meet as a group here at the, at the city, and we talk about those things, but it's more than talk, especially here over the last six months. Some of those citations and things, they were things where we've given people time and given them opportunity to repair things, and we've had to take, you know, folks to court. So we've tried to be as, as helpful and generous with the extensions and working with folks, but it has been over a year, and it's time to get things squared up, so that's kind of where we're at. I've talked about it before, we have our sign replacement program. The timing just worked out perfect with the tornado, to where we have a grant program that's like, hey, if you got a sign and it's non-conforming, grandfathered in, you know, just one of those big old kind of signs we don't like, if you will replace that, we'll pay up to $10,000 of the cost and share, you know, some of the cost with you. And we've had, we've had significant response to that. And Jay Ritterbeck, our Economic Development Community Planner, has led that effort, and we've worked with, we've been in touch with about every business on West Main Street and the folks that were affected by that. And BOMA stepped up and even put more money into that account, so we have a substantial, we have a substantial amount of money for that grant program. I don't have the specific numbers, but I believe there were maybe 18 or 20 that were looking to take, participate in that grant program. But really, even better than that, there were, there were probably another 12 or 15 that have just removed the signs completely and won't be replacing those. So you'll start seeing some signs come down, and then signs that are more in conformance with, or in total conformance with our zoning ordinance. So you'll start seeing that along West Main Street. But there's, there's several things going on, and on some of the properties, you know, where they're damaged, which is not something we're doing in planning, but our, you know, high-quality property maintenance enforcement and building codes, they're, they're working with property owners to get, get some of those still outstanding issues that are probably real visible to everybody. So all those things you see, it's like, oh, I wonder what's happening on that? You know, in every case, there is something happening, and in some cases, there's something fixing to happen, you know, substantial investment. In other cases, there's gonna be continued enforcement by the city to push that forward. So, if that can help any? Okay, thank you. And I can answer any other question anybody might have about last year? Okay? If not, I just had a couple of other, other things. I do want to mention, during our last meeting in December, we still had our senior planner, Grant Green, with us. He is no longer with us. He has taken a really great opportunity in the private sector, substantially great opportunity that, and, and last week was his last day here. So, and I'm sorry he wasn't able to be here, so we can recognize him, but we appreciate the efforts that he has given and the dedication he's given to our community here over the last seven and a half years. And so we're excited for him. We're also excited, you know, we're in the middle of a process now to replace, for recruitment, to replace that senior planner position. It's a very important position, and so we're eager here over the next couple of weeks as we get more people applying to start interviews. And so we're doing, we're doing that. One thing I may mention is that next Monday, we've been working on a capital improvement transportation plan for the next 10, 10 years, working with, creating something for BOMA. It's gonna be going to the capital projects, the BOMA Capital Projects... Uh, it's going to be going to the Capital Projects, the BOMA Capital Projects Committee, uh, next Monday. I believe it's at five o'clock in this room. Uh, there'll be, it'll be a work session or no, it'll be a Capital Projects meeting. But there'll also be an opportunity, I believe, for the public, uh, to speak, uh, toward the plan that we have. The plan is out there, uh, for the, uh, for the public to, to comment on. This plan will be, as we've talked about, looking at connectivity and the future transportation plan, which is separate from this. But once, once the BOMA, uh, defines what those priorities and those goals and plans are, uh, then the Planning Commission will undertake, uh, doing the future transportation plan, uh, for, for the element that, uh, that the Planning Commission does. And that is everything that I had, Mr. Chairman. But I can answer any additional questions if anybody, uh, had any. Otherwise, that's, that's all I have.
Thank you, Director Free. Appreciate it. Always enjoyed that year-end report and just the numbers that y'all share with us. Commissioner Hayes?
A calendar of the meeting dates where we, we know in advance there are a couple of Tuesdays that we're not going to meet.
Yes.
Like election date and whatnot. Are there any first Tuesdays next year that we know of that's going to change?
I don't believe there were.
Okay.
What, what we'll do is, uh, Zach will get out tomorrow. He'll send you all, uh, the schedule for next year, uh, so that you can, you know, mark all those dates on your, on your calendar. I don't foresee at this point, the, there won't be monthly work sessions. Probably at some point, the middle of the year, maybe July, August, we probably will need to have a work session, uh, on, uh, the future transportation plan. Uh, we might need something on that, but I don't, I don't foresee the need for a lot of work sessions for that second meeting, uh, that we have during the month. Uh, but I, we'll get that out to everybody tomorrow. Thank you, Ms. Tracy.
Any other questions, comments from commissioners? Seeing none, I am going to entertain a motion to adjourn. That is the slowest motion to adjourn we've ever had.
I'm sorry.
We're mostly having fun tonight.
Second.
Yeah, we got, we got, we got, we got enthusiastic second down there from Commissioner Slattery. Um, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion is approved. Thank you all very, very much.